Welcome everyone to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting. It is Tuesday, February the 21st, 2000, I'm sorry, January 21st, 2014. Thank you for the timing on that. Mayor John Dunbar is out of town, so I am going to chair tonight's meeting. For anyone who is new to our council meeting, over on the black table over there, we do have some agendas and the binder that has the full items that we look at here on our iPads in terms of staff reports. And if you have cell phones, unless you're the sheriff or the fire department, if you could turn those ringer at least to silent, that would be terrific. And let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Let the record reflect that Mayor Dunbar is excused.
If everyone could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If you see on our regular Town Council meeting agenda, we have items four, five, and six, which are recesses to different authorities that exist as legal entities under the town. It will be somewhat confusing to those watching, but there is public comment in each item. Public comment for those items are limited to items that are under the jurisdiction of those different authorities. The point I say is we'll get back to our normal public comment with the Town Council meeting after these three items, so don't worry about other items on our agenda when we get to them. So first, we will recess to the Yountville Housing Authority Annual Meeting. And I'm pulling up my agenda. And we'll start with the roll call. The roll call has already been called, are you?
Yes, all members are present with Mayor Dunbar excused.
I will open a public comment for any item that has to do with the Yountville Housing Authority, if anyone would like to make a comment about Yountville Housing Authority. Seeing no movement, I will move on to item four, which is election of officers. We are looking to elect the Chair and the Vice Chair, and by tradition, we typically elect the Mayor and Vice Mayor to these positions. I'll be happy to take a motion for that, since he's not here.
So moved.
Second.
So the motion is to appoint Mayor Dunbar the Chair and Vice Mayor Chilton as the Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Moving on to the consent calendar, there are two items listed there. Is there any questions or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. I assume we have no staff reports, we have no public hearings, we are going to have no scheduled items at this time, so I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously as well. Okay, the second of our three authorities, this is the Yountville Finance Authority. And try to do your roll.
All members are present, let the record reflect that Mayor Dunbar is excused.
Item number three is approval of minutes, the last meeting of January 15th, 2013. Can I have a motion for that?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Public comment, would anyone like to comment about the Yountville Finance Authority? Seeing none, I will move on to the election of officers, the President and Vice President. Can I get a motion for the President and Vice President?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to assume the motion is to appoint Mayor John Dunbar as President and Vice President as Vice Mayor Louis Chilton.
And also to confirm staff appointments as reflected in the staff report.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Consent calendar, item six, any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously as well. Item seven, regular items, there are none, there are no finance authority reports, there are no staff reports, we have no current future agenda items, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again.
One more.
Our final one.
All members are present, let the record reflect that Mayor Dunbar is excused.
This is for the Yountville Parking Authority, and my agenda has come up.
Did I jump too fast?
That's okay. Moving on to item three, public comment, if anyone would like to comment about the Yountville Parking Authority, if you want to talk about parking in town, I suggest you wait for the next consent calendar item. I'm sorry, the next public comment in our regular session. Any public comment? None. Moving on to item four, election of officers, Chair, Vice Chair, I would entertain a motion for the Chair to be Mayor John Dunbar and the Vice Chair to be Vice Mayor Louis Chilton, unless you have a different motion.
And to appoint all staff.
And all staff, so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item five is the consent calendar, any comments, questions, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. There are no regular items, no staff reports, no authority reports, and we don't currently have any future agenda items, therefore, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That passes, to everyone's surprise unanimously. Okay, we are now back to our normal council meeting, thank you for your patience. Item seven is adoption of the agenda, I don't believe we have any changes, but we are going to, we're going to pull an item from our consent calendar.
Vice Mayor and Council, with your consent, the staff would like to recommend pulling consent calendar item regarding the keeping of chickens. There has been an issue that we're aware of with some neighbor concerns, and I believe staff will present an overview, an idea of how to potentially make a win-win situation there.
Excellent, are we going to keep it in the same order?
Correct.
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Okay, we are going to start with item nine A.
Actually, public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, that's why. Public comment. If anyone has a public comment on an item that is...
No, we've pulled your item, you'll be right up next.
So this is for any item that's on the agenda, including the ordinance regarding chickens. So, anybody have anything that is not on tonight's agenda to address the council? And seeing none, your time will come very soon, is item nine A, which is our pulled consent calendar item. This is a second, a potential second reading and adoption of ordinance number 421-14, amending the Yountville Municipal Code regarding the keeping of chickens. Can we have a staff report? Okay, are you, we just want to go ahead and take?
Yep.
Okay.
I could do a quick introduction if you wanted.
Yeah, could you do that?
We are aware that there is a property owner in town that lives on a multifamily parcel, and they, she is concerned about the ordinance as presented, because it would not allow her to keep chickens on her property any longer. We've been in discussion with her, and she otherwise complies with the requirements of the code, so we've drafted a, an option for you tonight to add a letter "I" to the chapter on the keeping of chickens, that would essentially grandfather in multifamily parcels, where they submit a letter of request to the town of Yountville, and it's approved by the planning department, because it complies with the code and the property is subject to an inspection. So now I'll turn it over to the property owner to...
Well, before we get to that, I just want to clarify, when we had our discussion last time and passed the first reading of the ordinance, in the current version, multifamily residential parcels are not allowed to have chickens under the new ordinance. We created some exceptions for variances based on neighbors agreeing in single-family or single-dwelling parcels, but in that situation of this one. What kind of multifamily parcels do we have in town? Because I know when I first thought of this, I was thinking apartment buildings, town homes, et cetera.
Well, it can be anything from a duplex up to an apartment building with multiple units in it.
Okay.
So the whole range of multifamily, it's anything other than a single-family unit, essentially.
Okay.
I guess you're still Vice Mayor, right, Vice Mayor Chilton?
I am.
I just wanted to make a statement that I did not attend the January 7th meeting, but in that, in the interim, I, well, I did read the Agenda and Staff Reports for that meeting, and I reviewed the video from the last Town Council meeting, so I feel that I am prepared and open to discuss and vote on this tonight.
Great, thank you. Okay, I will open up the public comment for this item. Ma'am, please come up, if you could just state your name and your address, and let us know what you're thinking.
It's Alex Rosen, and it's 6220 Jefferson, and I'm up for Diane Bartholomew. She had a few things she just wanted to say. She missed on, when I was at the meeting, January 7th, I misunderstood what the meaning of multifamily was. I was thinking just apartments, so I didn't say anything about it, but now that I know it's the house, she wanted me to ask, which you've already done, to pull from the consent calendar, so that's done. But she wanted me to state that at 80 years old, she's been a longtime resident of Yountville, and has had chickens for over 30 years. Because she has cats, she has absolutely no rats, or mice, or vermin, or any of that kind. And her coop runs, which we just built a new and larger run, and the entire property has absolutely no smell whatsoever from chickens. I mean, she keeps a compost pile, she cleans every day, all day. And she just suffered from a near fatal head-on car accident just a few months ago, so this is, with that combined with this, has caused her a lot of stress, so she hasn't been able to come up here and talk herself. So she's asking that in her name, I ask that it be grandfathered in, so she can keep her chickens. And then the last thing is, what you all have a copy of is a letter from Thomas Keller, and I didn't know if you wanted me to read it, or just to let it pass.
It's in the record already, we've all seen it.
Is there anything you want to ask Diane? She's here with me.
Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Bartholomew?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else in the audience like to comment before we bring this back for council discussion? Seeing no movement, I will say that I did, Ms. Bartholomew took me around her property this afternoon to see, to see her property. It is, it's an interesting property, because it's much, much larger than anyone would ever have any idea from the road. And when we talked about multifamily dwellings, I had as well, in my mind, been thinking apartments, or townhomes, or duplexes, et cetera. And her property is a, is a more than 100-year house in the front, and there's another sort of cottage, or two cottages, I suppose, on the property, so they're spread out over 16,000 square feet. And as she said, I will say that she showed me their new chicken coop, which looks very nice, they're out there working on it today, and I do understand, and she has said that there had been certain issues in the past that were clearly not within the guidelines of the new ordinance that we've put together, but they've brought those items into compliance. But the one item that you, that is not within compliance quite clearly is the fact that her property has three homes on it, as opposed to one. And therefore, being multifamily, this would simply be disallowed without really any remediation. So I just want to let everybody know that. And any, any comments or questions? We do have a, the staff has put together, this is an option for the council, we obviously have the first, the reading, the ordinance that passed for the first time, the text of that, but this would be a new addition item to address a situation like this. Sandra, do we know of any other, not saying that there isn't, of any other multifamily parcels that have chickens on them in Yountville at this time?
There are none that I'm aware, but they could be out there.
Okay.
I do have a question, just a little more clarification, so what is the definition of a multifamily residential parcel? What does it include, what does it not include?
It's two or more residences on a single parcel.
So, again, apartment buildings?
Correct. It's any multifamily situation where you don't have just a single-family home.
I'm going to...
So I could name some of the properties in town as examples, or...
Well, what I was going to suggest is that it might be appropriate to have Sandra read the draft language, and then clarify that this is a grandfathering recommendation, and not an ability going forward for future multifamilies. So the multifamily prohibition still remains, what we are providing for is that with documentation, any situation such as Ms. Bartholomew's, or others that we do not know about, they would have a limited time period of 30 days within passage to get the situation documented, and then they would be grandfathered. But I just want to clarify, it's, I think we may be moving ahead of our audience by not having shared with them what we're talking about, but this is a limited grandfathering, and the intent of the ordinance would still be to prohibit the raising of foul on multifamily going forward.
So it seems like we need wording in here to specify exactly what you said, that we are grandfathering, and we're not really making an exemption for multifamily, like apartment complexes, that don't have to abide by the minimum 5,000 square feet, so I just want to clarify that language in here, and...
We've used the language in here that it's a legal non-conforming use, because that's defined by our ordinance, and we have a chapter on that. Grandfathering is more the common term for it, and so that's what this does, but we haven't used that term in this language.
Okay, so maybe permitted as an existing legal non-conforming use. Okay, got it, thanks.
Sandra, would you read the language, since it's relatively short?
Sure. It reads that existing chickens on a multifamily parcel, residential parcel, may be permitted as an existing legal non-conforming use, provided a written request is made to the town within 30 days of final passage of this ordinance and approved by the planning department, wherein it is determined that the keeping of the existing chickens otherwise complies with all requirements of this ordinance, and the property is subject to a site inspection to confirm compliance. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the property owner receiving approval of the legal non-conforming use shall not be permitted to replace any chickens which expire or otherwise are not kept on a multifamily parcel which exceed the number of chickens permitted on a single-family residentially zoned parcel.
I have a couple of questions, if I can. So does that mean, if I interpret this correctly, that, I know we have one homeowner, but let's say another homeowner has the same situation, if they come and apply within 30 days of the passage of this ordinance, they too could be allowed to receive approval of legal non-conforming use?
Yes, if they meet the requirements of the ordinance.
Correct.
What I would note is that we were aware of this parcel for the simple fact that the chickens were roaming at large, and so we'd heard from neighbors. We haven't heard from any other neighbors that a similar situation is occurring on a multifamily parcel.
Because they don't roam at large.
That doesn't mean it's not occurring.
Right, okay.
But that's generally how we learn about, of things.
Okay, and then, as I interpret this, to the very last, I guess it's the last sentence, although it's pretty long, so as chickens expire, the expectation is that it ultimately will be the number, and I don't profess to know the number, and I'm not that concerned about it, but the number will ultimately conform with the ordinance as chickens expire, is that correct?
Correct.
So that, if it, let's just say there's 50, and our ordinance allows eight, at the time that 42 expire, eight will only be allowed?
No. In order to get a permit as a legal non-conforming use, you have to be in compliance with the number of chickens under this ordinance, which is a minimum of four and a maximum of eight, so you couldn't exceed that. I think what this says is that if a chicken dies, you may replace it, as long as you're consistent with those standards.
So, so that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to make sure I understood. So then, if there were 50, not saying there are, just as a hypothetical, and we approved this, then 50 would be the allowable number into perpetuity?
No.
Okay, so I misinterpreted that again, repeat it for me, I'm dense.
They'll need to comply with the, with the provisions of the ordinance that are before you. And that permits on a 5,000 square foot parcel, you can keep four chickens, plus an additional two chickens for each thousand square feet, for a maximum of eight.
Right.
So you can get somewhere between four and eight, but that's the maximum, even as a legal non-conforming use.
I see. Okay. Now I understand. I thought maybe this was going to grandfather in a certain number of chickens forever.
This is only grandfathering in the allowance that a multifamily parcel can keep chickens.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, so Sandra, assuming this parcel is 15,000 square feet, then there would be a maximum of eight chickens allowed?
Correct.
Thank you.
Chicken talk. Okay, I feel better.
And not hypothetically, Ms. Bartholomew does not have 50 chickens.
Hypothetical, all right.
Any further discussion, or?
You want a motion?
Well, I, comments are, would you like to make a comment before you do that, so we can let everybody make their comments?
I'm fine with the suggested changes by staff.
I agree, and I'm fine with it, as well.
It's reasonable to me.
Okay, then we'll take a motion.
No, I'll make the, I'll make the motion, if you wish. So, I'm not exactly sure, is this the second reading now that we're adjusting or modifying it? Okay. So I'll do my best to not hurt this too much. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 421-14, amending the Yountville Municipal Code to add chapter, ooh, 6.04.080, Keeping of Chickens, and to amend chapter 17.08, definitions, 17.24, single-family residential, 17.28, mixed residential, 17.32, old-town historic, and 17.40, master-planned residential, residential to regulate the keeping of chickens, to add the language as presented by the planning director under item CI. Is that correct?
We have a second?
I second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Ms. Bartholomew, you can keep your chickens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, and thank you for your positive engagement of the town, I appreciate that. Okay, moving on to item 10, which are presentations. Our first presentation will be an update of the Veterans Home by Stan Jones, who is the interim Veterans Home Administrator, or Acting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council, just to give you a quick update on some of the things going on at the home, and a couple of activities that are coming up. I will be glad to announce that we have hired a PIO. Her name is Teri Maharado, and she starts February 3rd. So we're looking forward to that, she's moving here from Fresno. The Administrator, last time I was here, you asked about that, so I'll update you. We do have a strong candidate that we actually toured a week ago, a little over a week ago. He is from New Mexico, and he has great experience, kind of the same, he runs a similar facility as what we have here, independent living, assisted living, skilled, in New Mexico. And so, we are waiting at this point, he had some questions, the Governor's Office is still not done with his backgrounds, we're waiting to hear from them, so, but it looks Another thing that has been hot topic just over the last couple of days is our water level. So I just wanted to give you a quick, brief on that. We are at about 70% capacity right now at Rector. Apparently, it holds 4,500 acre-feet, and we are at 3,200 right now. So we will stay in communication with the town about that if there's issues, and I think Steve's probably on top of that with Dave. And then a couple of activities, I just wanted to mention that we are working on Founder's Day right now, that'll be April 1st, and of course, we'll send agendas down, Karen Zanatell will send those down to the town. But we have some entertainment and activities going on from 2:00 to 4:00 on, on April 1st. And then we're also working right now on a July 4th celebration, and again, we'll send everything down through Karen. That's the update I have, if there's any questions?
Any questions? Your Rector Reservoir Report's actually better than I was expecting, so, at least percentage-wise, so that's, that's nice to hear.
And with that, the, you know, as the Governor's Office has recognized the drought, all state facilities and homes will be decreasing, or are decreasing, have decreased 20% of our water usage. So we've already implemented that up at the home.
Great.
Okay, no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Stan, appreciate it. Okay, our next presentation, item 10B, is our Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome.
Good evening, Barry Beerman, representing Napa County Cal Fire, Yountville Fire Station. Quarterly report for October, November, and December of last year. Starting off with, the station itself ran 312 calls during that time period. Broken down within the town, we ran three reported structure fires, one vehicle fire, 38 medical aides, six public assists, and one vehicle accident. It's pretty normal for the fire service, about 70% or so being medical-related. The major events that occurred, luckily, nothing major within the town, but the, we did assist the city of Napa with two structure fires, confirmed working fires during the month of December, it was on December 4th and December 8th, where we sent the Yountville units down to assist and brought in backfill units behind to cover the town. Also, we had some special events that did occur with Christmas and stuff around the holidays, Yountville Fire Station gets very busy. The toy drive was very successful this year, that's really, you know, for years now, has been spearheaded from that fire station for the Napa County Fire Department Cal Fire, and we got out and gave a lot of good, good toys to needy kids throughout the county of Napa, including the town, and again, very successful. We had the Chiefs Dinner at Yountville Fire Station this year, recognizing the nine volunteer firefighters of the year from the various nine volunteer fire companies in Napa County, and, and one career firefighter of the year that was held. We participated and assisted with the Yountville Days Parade, which is always a fun event for the firefighters. The Festival of Lights, annual tree lighting, and participated in the Focus Dinner, where we were, got involved with the firefighters. We did, we did do some training during this time with the local winery, fire extinguisher training, which we will go out and assist. Businesses will ask us to come and teach their personnel how to properly use a fire extinguisher when the fire is small, to prevent it from getting out of control. We did that at the BV Winery, which was outside of town. We did participate, as you may or may not be aware, the technical rescue team for Napa County is housed out of Yountville, and most of those team members, or a large majority of them, work at the Yountville Fire Station, and that's, technical rescue could include everything from trench collapse, a building collapse, we have a lot of technical equipment there on Rescue 12, which is a piece of unstaffed equipment that's housed out of there, called out in need. The Urban Shield was a event in, in the Bay Area that goes on every year with teams from all over Northern California to participate in disaster simulations, it's held in October. This year, the team, I believe there were 17 teams, including San Francisco, Oakland, Alameda, very large counties, our team took sixth place overall, and they did a really good job there, and so, just to reassure, you've got some well-trained folks there. Couple other side notes, involved the Kiwanis Club Luncheon. And starting January 1st, which just went into effect, BLS providers such as us that are EMTs, the county now has a policy that we can administer epinephrine, epi as we call it, which, you know, is a very life-threatening, can be a life-threatening condition to overcome. You may or may not be aware, where in July, there was a person who was suffering from anaphylactic shock, who was delivered to the fire station, they helped facilitate a successful outcome of that patient, of which, there were, the firefighters from Yountville were recognized at a luncheon, I believe it was in December, correction, it was in October at Queen of the Valley Hospital, but now, we now carry the epinephrine throughout the county on our fire engines that we can administer immediately to help those folks with their airways, et cetera, and turn the corner a lot quicker. And a burn ban did go into effect countywide, went into effect Monday, and it was declared in the state responsibility area. We have some requirements in the local valley areas that we want to at least go out and inspect the burns for the farmers that need to burn, we just need to make sure it's not a threat to the wildland, because this year is like no, no other year I've seen, probably you too, is regarding the dryness of what we're having, and so we're trying to prevent any more wildfires from starting, and a burn ban is, is one of the ways we do it. They'll still be burning, it's just going to be monitored a lot more than it was before. And that's about it. Any questions?
Considering the drought and how dry, we can all just look at our... Uh, considering the, the drought and how dry, we can all just look at our windows and see, have you added any more personnel?
Uh, we're in process as a department, we just, this week hired five more additional firefighters and one engine that's actually housed out of Santa Rosa, that's part of the Sonoma Lake-Napa Unit. Um, we, we, we are keeping some aircraft on in the state, um, and, you know, as far as, that was probably the only augmentation of personnel we did, was just different units throughout the North State, hired an engine here, an engine there, and some, and some personnel. And, uh, we're, you know, we're, we're definitely, while it's shorter days and, and maybe not quite as dry as summertime, these fuels are getting drier than we normally see in the summer. Our biggest threat of large fire, fires occur right now when we have the wind. Um, and so, we are trying to augment where we can, we're being diligent in keeping personnel on duty whenever possible, and then in the event, which there's even some predicted north winds to come in, uh, maybe Thursday or Friday of this week, we'll put special staffing patterns in place, which may start to staff up a couple extra engines for two or three days, and we are doing that now throughout winter, which is, we've never done before.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your vigilance on that. Item 10C, Sheriff Department Public Safety Quarterly Report. Sergeant Wilkinson.
Vice Mayor, Members of Council, good evening. I'm here to, um, I know you guys have already seen the, uh, the fourth quarter statistics, so, uh, my presentation is geared more towards the year end of 2013. Community activities, uh, major events that were held in town this quarter were Yountville Days and Festival of Lights. There were no significant law enforcement problems during either one of those events. Uh, I did want to mention that throughout the year, we received a lot of assistance from Sheriff's Mounted Bossy and the town volunteers, um, in, in all of the events that were in town, and, uh, and thanks to them, we were able to keep the, the, those events adequately staffed without having to hire a bunch of overtime from outside deputies. So, uh, their assistance has, has been really, very valuable for us this year. Uh, just a review, review of our staff, um, we have Deputy Cal Valenti, extraordinary, who is still, in addition to his duties, does a vehicle abatement, Veterans Home Liaison, and maintains our PaaS devices. Deputy Zimmerman, um, is a Darren instructor for Yountville Elementary last year, and then again this year. Uh, he's hoping to pass that off to Deputy Wamsley at some point, but he's going to be our chair officer again this year. Deputy Keith Wamsley is our primary graveyard deputy. Um, our volunteer Donna Jurassic, still volunteers two days a week at the substation, uh, and Jack Gleason is out, uh, making lots of friends doing parking enforcement. Um, as for the crime trends for 2013, uh, overall, the statistics showed a decrease in many of the categories from 2012. Um, the total number of calls for service this year decreased by two percent, crimes against persons decreased by forty-six percent. Uh, the greatest decrease was in simple assaults, but overall assaults dropped from twenty-eight last year to fifteen this year, so they're way down. Uh, the, there was only one felony assault and one domestic violence incident, uh, there were no homicides or robberies or sexual assaults reported this year. Property crimes did increase slightly from sixty-one reports last year to sixty-five in 2013. Uh, trends showed an increase of petty theft and auto thefts, but a decrease in grand thefts. Uh, the number of burglaries was only one higher, so they stayed pretty consistent. Um, the types of cases indicate to me that the increase is primarily, uh, in thefts of opportunity versus, um, premeditated crimes like burglaries. Calls for service at the Veterans Home accounted for seventeen point one percent of all the calls for service this quarter. Regarding traffic enforcement, the total number of traffic collisions decreased by one, uh, this year, so we had a total of sixteen. Of those, five of, involved minor injuries, and there were no fatalities. Uh, review of the traffic accidents showed that they occurred in random locations and didn't indicate any specific problem areas. Uh, five were solo vehicles into stationary objects, five were vehicle versus vehicle, uh, five were parked cars with no suspects, and one was a vehicle versus bicycle, uh, but in that case, there was no actual collision. It was a, it was only deemed an accident because it was a reaction to a driving maneuver, but the, the two didn't actually collide. Uh, there were no accidents involving pedestrians. In addition to our commitment to traffic education and enforcement, we increased focus on parking-related issues last year, uh, with the help of town volunteer Jack Gleason. Uh, the number of parking citations issued increased from three hundred and ten in 2012 to four hundred and eleven in two hun, 2013. Uh, Jack volunteered a hundred and fifty-eight hours and issued a hundred and four parking citations just from August to December, so stand by for next year. Coincidentally, the total number of citations issued increased by exactly one hundred over last year, uh, from four hundred and forty-seven to five hundred and forty-seven. Vehicle abatements, um, we didn't have any this last quarter, so the totals for the year were sixteen abatements, uh, only one of them being towed. And for a highlighted case, um, rather than take one from last quarter, I actually took one that was more recent, I wanted to bring up a recent burglary at, at the local restaurant that we had. A suspect forced entry through a front door, um, targeted expensive wines from the wine cellar. Uh, they had some knowledge of wines, since the only expensive wines were taken and the less valuable items were left behind, um, and, uh, they also left the, the safe behind. So, um, I bring up this case because many of the circumstances were very common, uh, things that we see in commercial burglaries. They committed the crime while the restaurant was closed and under construction, uh, they entered at a point that, that was not well-lit and is concealed from view by foliage in front of the business. They had prior knowledge of the location of the valuables inside, um, and they had time to be selective in what they took, because there was no alarm in place. So this case has, has kind of inspired my goal for the upcoming year. Um, last year, uh, at the end of last year, we joined Next Door Yountville, and we did release some information on current scams that were going on. Um, in this coming year, I want to continue to use social media, uh, as well as personal contacts, uh, to better inform citizens and business owners about, uh, local crime trends and spread crime prevention tips, uh, because we in law enforcement obviously get to see what the trends are and the tricks and trade, tricks of the trade that are used by the bad guys, we just need to be better about getting that information out to business owners and residents, so they can hopefully try to prevent some of them in the future. And, that's it. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Yes, please, thank you so much for your service. I wanted to find out about bicycle citations. I've noticed many, many times, people who are riding bicycles do not, um, observe the rules.
Yeah. Uh, we, I know that we are making more bicycle stops, I, I don't have the exact statistics for it, um, versus, they don't sort those out of the other citations.
Oh, I see.
But I do know that, that our deputies are aware of it, and we are making more bike stops and issuing more citations, because it has been an ongoing problem, and we've gotten a lot of complaints from it.
Thank you very much.
Other questions?
Good job.
I just have a comment, though, I'd just like to encourage the, um, the diligence with the parking citations, I certainly have noticed a change, and, uh, it's something that I've always brought up, so, tell, uh, tell me.
Jack is your guy, he is very, very vigorous.
Tell Jack that he's doing a good job, and while he's writing those tickets, if a bicycle goes by, nail them as well, so, we really have to fix that problem. Thanks.
Thank you.
Doug, thank you. I just want to say that, um, first of all, considering how many people come and go through this town, and, and we are a small town, but we have a lot of people here at any given time, that it's, uh, great to live in such a safe and, and, uh, um, nice town to be in, and, uh, I, I do believe that the, uh, our relationship with your department is a, is a model, uh, for the county, you got, you guys do a great job, and you guys take the small things, uh, seriously, which I think makes people less likely to come here and want to do things, so, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Okay. Moving on to Item 10D, the highlight of tonight's meeting is the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER, um, and I will... Is Kathy not here? Oh, that's right, Kathy's not here, so I will go to, uh, our town manager to introduce our guest.
Just briefly, um, it's indeed a, a pleasure to introduce Terry Krieg, who is our independent auditor, and he will go through and explain the results of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and I'm sure he will also throw in a acknowledgement that, uh, we're now on our fourth year of GFOA recognition of our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is not a small undertaking, and it's a fairly significant achievement. But, it's his time to tell you, as the independent auditor, what his analysis and findings of our financial, uh, transactions are and the way we keep our, our books in order, so with that, I will turn it over to Terry.
Well, um, good evening, and thank you for inviting me here to present to you your June 30, uh, 2013, uh, financial statements. I must say, uh, it's the first time I've been in your council chamber since the remodel has happened, and, um, I really like the color scheme, it's very, very soft and, uh, welcoming. Anyway, uh, couldn't help but notice, and I keep looking around, it's so different than what it used to be. Uh, anyway, um, I have completed the audit of the town's, um, 2013 financial statements, and have expressed an independent auditor's opinion that the town's financial statements do present fairly the town's, uh, financial position of its governmental activities, its business activities, its, uh, major funds, which are your general, your capital projects, your debt service, and your water and wastewater funds, uh, all in conformity with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. The report is organized, organized in a number of sections, there's an introductory section, which here, Finance Director's Transmittal Letter, and of course, as Steve mentioned, your, uh, GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting in regard to the town's June 30, 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. There's also a financial section with a management discussion and analysis section, uh, the financial statements, and the notes to the financial statements. And there's some acquired supplemental information, which presents a budget-to-action comparison for your general fund, and a supplemental section consisting of some, uh, combining financial statements for your non-major funds, and some statistical information generally presenting some statistics over a tenure period using different measures of, uh, financial, um, items. Uh, there is however, this year, um, several changes that are, uh, in your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that are, differ from previous years. One of those changes is the, as you probably have noticed, the format, the, uh, content, and the wording of my independent auditor's report is quite a bit different, uh, than it has been in the past, which was the, um, profession's attempt to more clarify the auditor's role in regard to the audit of financial statements, as well as, uh, management's responsibilities for the financial statements. There is also changes in the title of your government-wide statements, and changes in the titles of your, um, business-type statements, your water and wastewater statements, it's generally just a title change, instead of referring to statements of net assets, and changes in net assets, just change, now changes in net position and the town's net position. There also is a, uh, implementation of a new standard, and it shows up primarily in your general fund. You notice in the liability section, there's a new category called Deferred Inflows of Resources, and that was a recent change that was adopted, but what that really represents is what used to be called Deferred Revenue. It's a way of acknowledging that, uh, for example, long-term notes receivable are not available for use in a government fund, because it's just a note, so, it makes sense that, uh, that should not be recognized as a inflow of resource until such a time that it's actually collected, and that's the concept there. What I'd like to do is give you a brief overview of the financial highlights in your 2013 financial statements, and, uh, break that down into looking at your government-wide financial statements, which kind of treats the town as if it were a private business. There's one column for your governmental activities, and then one column for all of your business-type activities. Uh, overall, the town's net position, uh, including both business and governmental, increased by about, uh, three point one seven million dollars in fiscal, uh, 2013. Uh, of that, most of that, about two point three million was generated from your governmental activities, and about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand or so generated by your business activities. But, um, most of the increase in your governmental activities was related to what, what it can be viewed as, um, capital asset transactions, there's a capital contribution of the, uh, sculpture that was valued at about eight hundred thousand dollars, which shows up in those government-wide statements, but not in the fund statements. Uh, you also added, I think, about, um, seven hundred thousand dollars net in capital improvements in fiscal, um, 2013. Plus, there was also about a five hundred thousand decrease in the city's long-term debt, so those all combined, I think, uh, kind of represent the majority of that increase in your governmental activities area. Bottom line is, if you viewed the governmental activities as a business-type operation, ignoring the capital changes, you probably, uh, had a net increase around two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand in the city's governmental activities, liquid-type, uh, assets. I'd like to talk a little bit about the, uh, oh, I might say, also mention that, your general revenues actually increased about one million dollars in fiscal, uh, 13 compared to fiscal 12, and most of those increases were from property taxes, sales tax, and, and of course, the biggest increase was in your hotel tax. Uh, while there was about a million dollar increase in the governmental activities revenues, there was also about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase in expenses in that governmental activity section, that gets back to around the, sort of the two to three hundred thousand dollar overall change. I'd like to talk a little bit about the overall, uh, financial position of your governmental funds, and that's moving away from looking at the town as a business enterprise, and looking at the town as a government, in the traditional viewpoint of looking at funds and what's available in the funds, and how you ended the fiscal year, and how much you had to start the new fiscal year with. Your town ended fiscal 13 with a general fund balance of about three point five six million dollars, and that was about an increase of seven hundred thousand over fiscal 12, and again, uh, that was because of the, uh, strength of the revenue stream, uh, improving in your general fund, primarily again from your hotel taxes. You also ended, uh, 2013 with about five point three million dollars in your capital projects fund. This was up about three point seven million dollars from fiscal 12, but the main reason for that increase was that you did sell some, at least, revenue bonds, and you brought into that capital project fund about fourteen, four point two million dollars in, uh, debt proceeds that were used for funding, uh, future capital projects, and in addition, your general fund transferred about one point one million dollars out of the general fund and into that capital project to help match the cost of, of the future projects. You'd have about one point four million dollars in your debt service fund, that's set aside for future payments of debt obligations, and about two hundred thousand dollars in other governmental funds for special purposes. The town also, uh, prefunded its other post-employment benefit plan in fiscal 13, contributing an additional, um, two hundred twenty-three thousand dollars into the trust for employee retirement benefits. Uh, your town is one of the, um, fortunate, uh, local governments, because you have actually a, uh, net pension, uh, the post-employment benefit asset as opposed to liability, because of your dis, financial decisions to pre-fund, uh, that liability, where a lot of other local governments have very large liabilities that are being booked in their financial statements, because they did not have the financial resources to pre-fund this particular obligation. In terms of your water and wastewater, uh, funds, which is your business-type operations, they ended, um, collectively, uh, fiscal 13 with about six hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars in cash, other than the two point three million that's set aside, uh, for drought reserve purposes, uh, this was actually a positive thing, it was an increase of about five hundred thousand dollars in cash holdings at the end of fiscal 13 compared to where you were at the end of fiscal 12. The water fund actually had a positive cash flows of about two hundred forty-three thousand, generated from just its operations, but the wastewater fund, well, it had fund, while it had almost a $200,000 increase in its aggregate cash position, that was really because of the fact that it borrowed $363,000 from money from your other funds in order to perform projects. If you had not seen that borrowing inflow of cash into your wastewater fund, its actual cash would have decreased almost about $200,000. So this is something to keep in mind when you look at your wastewater enterprise. Overall, the town ended fiscal 13 with about $13 million in non-fiduciary cash and investments that excludes the money in the irrevocable trust for your other post-employment benefits. So the town has about $4 million left in the proceeds from the lease revenue bonds that were sold in fiscal 13 to conduct and continue on with the future projects. That's pretty much an overview and conclusion of my presentation on the financial part. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to see if I can answer them.
Any questions? Come on. Councilmember Hall?
Well, it's really, first of all, thank you so much for the report.
Sure.
One quick question, just for a little background, for those people that are watching, because I know this is the part that really is scintillating for so many people that are at home. Can you just, and I know, Terry, you've told me every time that you come here, how long you've been in this practice, which isn't necessarily as important, but how many other municipalities do you do this work for?
I've been auditing, providing services to local governments in California, and outside of California for that matter, for probably close to 40 years. Last fiscal year, I think, my firm conducted audits of nine cities, Northern California as well as in Southern California, and also performed audits of, I want to say, maybe around 10 to 15 special districts, being special districts being community service districts, wastewater enterprises, and special units of local government, joint powers agencies, so to speak. So I have a pretty in-depth experience about what I do.
And that's the reason why I bring it up, because, you know, we are a small community, but I think what we have is, with regards to an overall governmental agency, it's not that uncomplex, if you will. It's a relatively complex set of entities that we run, or funds that we have here, and just having the breadth of your experience and knowledge is important. The one question I would ask, because you brought it up, and I just want to make sure I understand it, because I'm not sure I fully understand it, but your comment about the OPEB, or the other benefits,
Yes.
Post-retirement benefits. You indicated that we've had the ability to fund in advance.
Yes.
You're saying that we've been able to fund in advance of what we would have paid on a pay-as-you-go basis? Is that correct?
What I'm saying is, the way the accounting works for these other post-employment benefits is there's two concepts involved. There's the actuarial concept, which is, probably shows up, let me see if I can find that page back here.
Page 59.
It's the only page you probably have memorized.
Yeah, there's the actuarial concept, and then there's the contribution concept. And the contribution concept is what's applicable to your town's financial statements. And the accounting standard in regard to that is that if you have an actuarial determined annual contribution, which is the amount necessary to fund your plan over the next 30 years on an actuarial basis, and if you contribute the amount to do that, which would include the premiums that you pay currently for those retiree medical plans, plus contribute an additional amount that equals this actuarial determined aggregate contribution each year, then you, so to speak, break even, and you do not have to book an additional liability in your town financial statements. And what's happened is, over the last several years, the town has contributed essentially more than that actuarial aggregated amount, and that's given rise to this net pension asset as opposed to a net pension liability that shows up in your financial statements. That said, to move away from the financial statement presentation side and back into the actuarial side of things, on an actuarial basis using the July 1, 2012 valuation of your other post-employment benefit plan, you can see on that page that there's an unfunded actuarial accrued liability of about $1.5 million. So the thing to keep in mind is, the actuarial side of things involves a lot of guesswork. It's basically mortality rates, length of employment of your employees, rates of pay, planned investment rates of return, premium projected cost increase over the lifespan of the retirement plan. So there's a lot of assumptions that are kind of plugged in by your actuary to develop this actuarial accrued liability, and that's what shows up, and that's where the $1.5 million is. But in terms of your financial statements, there's one set of standards there. In terms of disclosures, and the actuarial unfunded liability, there's another set of disclosures.
The actuarial notes, we used to always call the, basically, the dartboard, and you just pick the number.
I call them smoke and mirrors, but yeah, I understand. And as long as you brought up that topic, there's one thing I haven't mentioned here, is there is, on the horizon, which is effective for the June 30, 2015 year, which is not too far away, a new accounting standard that's going to impact all local governments and state governments, and it's Governmental Accounting Standards Board Number 68. And what that does is it's going to establish new accounting and disclosure requirements for the public employees' retirement plans applicable to each respective unit of local government. And Onville, like many cities, other than large, you know, cities, when I say large, I mean like San Francisco, LA, so forth, so on, is in a pool with other similar cities of a similar size in the public employees' retirement system. So what the new accounting standard is going to require is that each respective local community will have to determine what is its share of the assets in this giant pool at PERS, and what is the city's share of the unfunded liability in this pool at PERS. And depending upon how those numbers work out, and how the actual implementation of the new standard is presented, the city may be then required to book a liability in its actual financial statements for this unfunded public employees' pension liability. But everybody's going to have to deal with it. It's around the corner. It's in 2015. I hear information from some of my other clients, it's, PERS has said they will ultimately be providing that information on each participant's share of that pool, and your share of assets and share of liabilities, and then it'll be a matter of actually implementing that particular standard. Of course, the one thing that always comes to mind when that issue is brought up is, that's making the assumption that all units of local government have the same configuration in the PERS pool, because as we all know, there's differences between local communities. Some have safety that they contribute to, some don't have safety, some have contract arrangements, some have different kinds of staff, some have, you know, it's a lot of differences, even though one might think that each city is similar. They are in some respects, but each community and its financial affairs are totally different. So we'll just have to wait and see how that particular standard evolves when it's implemented.
Sounds like the Full Employment Act for a bunch of people in the accounting and actuarial world. One last question.
Sure.
And that's with regards to our financial system. I think this is the third full year that we've been on Springbrook?
Yes.
And just from your perspective, has it been easier for you and the staff, I think the staff would articulate, yes, it's been easier to gather information, to organize, and to budget, and that kind of stuff, but what about from an audit and a review standpoint?
Well, to be frank with you, everybody's proponent of the software that they have. I mean, that's, you know, it goes without saying. The truth of the matter is, each software type has good points, and that's a good point. And it depends where your preferences are in terms, as a user, of whether this is really a great system or not a great system. I'm not a particular proponent of advocating any one particular software brand over the other. But I can tell you that I've found that in comparison to the software that the city had been using previous to its conversion to Springbrook, that I think it was an effective change, and that it was beneficial. I think the ability to generate decent-looking reports for pre-audit work is very good. The ability to generate detailed information is good. So I think it's, you know, it's a positive benefit from the changeover, as far as I can see.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks for your report.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Sure, you're very welcome.
Well, to defend the science of actuarial, I, first of all, thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
And I know that real accountants like hard numbers. I have found, we have a multi-billion-dollar life insurance companies who depend on those folks and do a pretty good job, so their assumptions can be good. I think what's great is having the information, the best estimates that we can have to understand what the future may or may not bring. And to me, it sounds like 68 is at least a step in the right direction. The more information we have, the better off we are. I just want to say thank you yet again for another year. I do find, having looked at other jurisdictions, various entities, financial statements that ours are really easy to understand compared to a lot of different jurisdictions, the explanation of them, the upfront management discussion and analysis is really, really good.
Well, you know, in that regard, I have to tell you that your Finance Director, Kathleen, does a very, very good job in putting your document together. She does spend a considerable amount of time and effort in thinking through the content and the array of the information in your Management Discussion and Analysis section, as well as the rest of the report itself. And she really cares about the quality of the end product, and does her very best to see that it's as good as it can be.
Well, and I would say that there are many pages in there that I have to read several times, that I find them, either learning something, or I get confused easily on them. But that first section is, I always say, if anybody wants to understand what's going on in our town government, just go right there and read that first section. That'll take you there. So thank you very much, once again, for another year.
You're very welcome.
And we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Very good, thank you.
As long as your report is good.
I understand. There would be no reason that I can foresee that it wouldn't be. So, yeah, the bottom line is, as you all know, as managers, that if you have good people in your organization, you don't encounter the difficulties and issues that other organizations have to deal with. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Sure.
Moving on in our agenda, just to make a note, the originally agendized item of 11A, the Onville Community Church, has been continued at the applicant request to the February 18, 2014 Town Council meeting.
Can I have a motion, please?
Oh, we need to actually do that?
Yes, please.
Have a motion to continue this to February 18?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12, this is an update of our strategic plan for fiscal years 2011 through 2016. Our Town Manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. On behalf of the town's management team staff, I'm pleased to present our Strategic Plan Status Update Report 4. As you know, we have adopted the Strategic Plan 2011-16, and this has provided, I think, a tremendous opportunity for staff to prepare budgets and our annual work plan around key elements and themes that the council has previously approved. We're trying a slightly different format presentation. I heard from you all that it was getting a little tedious to track, so what we've tried to do is just highlight what we've accomplished current in the area, and I don't want to detract from a number of the earlier accomplishments and things that are completed or go into maintenance mode, because, as you know, some of the things, we've made a tremendous effort, for example, to improve communications and outreach, and we don't stop. It becomes an ongoing effort, so we're going to highlight some of those. So bear with me, I'm going to try to move quickly, but I want to make sure that we illustrate a number of the things, and really, the variety. Plus, I think it's a, I know, I was telling our staff, I took a lot of pride in what the organization and the council have accomplished in the last year when we take a step back. We don't often do that. We often look at those things that we still didn't get to, what's still on our list, and to be honest, we have a few of those, and we're honest about those. But I do think it's a good opportunity to take a look and reflect back on what we have accomplished. And again, I think what's really important is, this strategic plan really is indicative, and it's found in your work plan. And we've referenced the strategic plan all of the time in your council staff reports to show how the correlation. Under leadership, sustain effective town governance. This is an area where we have had several municipal code updates, and we are beginning, you'll see it in the next couple of agenda items, an update of the Town Council protocols. 1.12, protect community health and safety, and 1.24, provide a safe workplace. Without a doubt, the most significant has been the town selling the bonds that our auditor referenced, and the fact that we are at the 95% completion. We've survived six and a half months in modulars and temporary cramped quarters, and we are in the final stages of moving back. We are moved back into the historic Town Hall building and completing the incorporation of the annex. But that's not the only area we also worked on. We've also included a security project to protect the town's corporation yard wastewater treatment plant, as well as here at Town Hall. We sort of went from just keys and locks to motion sensors, cameras, and really, current industry standard, not over the top, which is pretty basic for the current time. 1.13, update town policies and procedures. This is a big item all the way, and it's one that we are not where I'd like yet. It's one we continue to work on, and it takes a bit of time. But the goal here is the council works on updating council policies. Staff attempts to go back and make sure that the administrative policies and our internal structures are in place to implement those. And we've had a number where we've purchased here, and it includes the purchasing ordinance, the OPEB, and we've had an administrative purchasing policy and procedure. So we're making progress in some of those, and we are also, I think what's more important, is we're on a department level. When a new issue comes up, we make sure that the internal policy, or governance, or binder project, as it's locally referred to by our employees, we document how we go about doing it, so we have that. Optimize organizational structure in 1.21. We reorganized the Public Works Municipal Operations Division to replace a vacant maintenance worker two position with a facility and ground worker, a more appropriate focus in our parks and public space landscape area, and also use some of the budget savings to create seasonal maintenance aid positions. So it was a more effective, cost-effective structure around the work. We've also reorganized the planning department to replace the associate planner position with a management analyst position that will be shared between public works and planning, and a little bit of the budgeted savings will allow for a part-time office assistant. Again, more focus on what the current work needs of the organization, rather than simply just doing and filling what's always there. And that's kind of a mantra that we go through. Support effective workplace succession. Here I feel really excited, because the town's had some opportunities to actually develop employees at several levels. And in a small organization, it's not always possible. That's the first thing I'm going to say. Succession planning doesn't always work, especially as lean as we are, because the person has to have the right skill set and capacity. And here, I'm very excited that we've been able to promote, and we've had employees that have worked with us. They've developed, they've provided certifications, obtained training, and that includes the water service service maintenance worker. We were able to fill that internally with Nick Hickman, and we've just filled a maintenance worker-one-two vacancy internally with our facility and grounds worker that we hired a year and a half ago, or a year ago, I should say. And that's really exciting to see the development, and Juan Castillo has moved into that position. And as you all know, starting with the chicken follow-up update this year, I'm very pleased to have Sandra Smith moving in from associate planner into the planning and building director. And that was something we talked about where appropriate, because it saves us money long-term, but we have to, the organization needs to do more in terms of employee development and training. So we're starting, I think, to see the fruits of some of that extra work plan and some of that extra revenue going into training and development. Administrative personnel organizational management, prudently manage risk. One thing I like to say is we have limited claims, and that's something we don't have a lot of control over, but to this point, we have had very limited claims. We've just implemented a third-party subrogation program, and we've done that internally, but what we've real realized is, my doing it when I have time and trying to have other department heads, it's not necessarily the most cost-effective. And in working with ParsAC, our risk pool, and our third-party claims management, they've actually created a program where we can turn it over to people that really know what they're doing, and their claims management people can talk with other claims management people and hopefully get us a recovery quicker and a more accurate recovery. Although I will point out, we do feel pretty good on a handful of the ones that we have. As you may remember, I think one of our more successful efforts was when the DUI hit our bridge, and we managed to secure several forty to fifty thousand dollars towards a bridge replacement. Again, we prefer not to have a whole lot of claims, to be all honest, but it is something where we're basically trying to do that process smarter, and that is something that the town clerk and I will be coordinating that program, as well as the affected departments when there's a claim. Sharing and use of organizational knowledge. Hard to believe, but we are about to approach our one-year anniversary of the paperless agenda process and our iPads. And I still think we're learning a little bit, but I would say overall, it's a successful program. We've launched, I think we're all learning that it has different nuances towards, but I would say, most of the effect that we wanted to achieve, we have achieved. Probably the biggest challenge is still making sure that we have the public accountability here at the meeting, but the nice thing is, the material's out, people have a lot more access to it, and I take great pride, and I know the town clerk does too, that when people look on Friday, they're going to find our stuff on Friday. So I take a lot of pride in what we're doing there. We've also implemented cross-training between the accounting technician position and the administrative assistant in finance to try to provide increased coverage and duplicity. And I will point out, that is an area I'm doing further study to try to make sure we have adequate separation, and it's an area that I do think we need to look at a little bit more going forward, just because of the amount of volume of transactions and making sure that we do what we need to do appropriately. And I will say, there may have been some areas that we're not firing on all cylinders, and we're going to be taking a look at how to improve that. And simply, at some point, doing things the right way sometimes takes more staff time and the documentation, and this is another area where grants programs and all those things, the record-keeping is really easy when you don't do anything, but when you start going out and putting, and we're doing stuff. And that's part of the other thing, is just the amount of transactions to keep up with our aggressive and well-funded capital projects. But the new federal programs and the requirements, you know, the auditor mentioned every time he comes, you know, I think they should ban the actuarial congress for like a decade, just because they come out with new things that we have to do, and it's very similar to my conversation when I talk about the regulatory agency. Nobody ever looks at what is the added value of twenty-five to sixty hours of additional internal staff that we have to do to fill out the charts and do all the stuff. In our organization, where we have the lean financial staff that we have, we just don't, so that's an area, I'm just plopping a seed that that is, there's a couple areas that we'll be doing some look at. Electronic records management system. We're in our third year of cataloging and scanning, and this is probably also the area where the town clerk and I will look at what's on the horizon, and how do we take that record, what we've done to the next level. And we are really focused on trying to get a public portal, so that's an area that we've got to better understand where we're going, and we will be assessing and taking a look at some service providers out there to see if we're currently, the solution we have is appropriate. But I would say we're very pleased with the volume of product that we have scanned and managed to have in records, and that's now an institutional practice. We move forward, and we'll be fully converting all of the applications and stuff in planning and public works world, so when applicants come for their final stuff, it's done, we're going to get it in electronic format. Graham and Sandra are very helpful in that format, but getting a lot of that so that we don't have to keep the volumes and volumes is very helpful. So it's been a tremendous undertaking. We're now into departmental records, but I do want to put a kudo to Michelle and the town clerk, because we now do have all of the council agenda packed since incorporation, along with a number of historical documents. We've accomplished also most all of the permitted HR and employee file records, and we're doing this, for the most part, with a limited part-time, helping us to coordinate staff doing it, and then it goes off to Sacramento and is scanned, and they do certain things that I have no idea what they do too, and then we can come back and find them. But that's what we're really trying to work on, is how to make that database of information more accessible to the public, more accessible to staff. So that's been pretty exciting, especially when you realize, three years ago, we were going, you know, completely from paper, which means we had to find it in a hard file. And, you know, frankly, with an organization that's approaching fifty years old, not all of us know what's in the files that predate us. So this is a real tool for staff to use, and I think it'll be a, I know the council's been very supportive, and I know a number of you use it as well. And part of that's also our update of the town strategic plan, which we're doing. Thrust number two, community character. Maintain and enhance the appearance of Yountville. A number of variety of projects here. I mean, one of that is something that we do often, and the council and staff do, in how ZDRB and council items on planning projects are put forward. But there's a couple that we're really like to highlight. One, this town entered into a reimbursement agreement, again, slightly entrepreneurial with the owners of the Heston project, so that we could underground additional town facilities in Vandilyer Park. And, you know, it's one of those things, when we underground overhead utility lines, nobody really notices it, they kind of go by, wow, that looks nice. But we got a significant section done by piggybacking on the undergrounding project. So again, a lot of time-consuming, because we take on it, and it wasn't necessarily planned on our part, but I still think, and I think the public works director, Graham Wasworth, agrees that, in our case, when we can piggyback on something else and get tie-in, and we're getting better at help to, helping our project developers know what we need and know what we do out of that. But again, that's our second area where we've achieved some significant undergrounding on Washington. The Yountville Arts Commission continues to be a positive success with the art walk, five new public installations this year. They've just finished a call for artists, and we anticipate five to six more placements this year. And I'm told two more weeks, and we will have the Wayfinding Sign Program. I'm told two more weeks, so we'll just leave it at that. They, I have, we have walks, we know where they're going, so that is a delayed process, and not one that I am pleased with in terms of where we're at, but it is, I think, going to be a positive project, and it will also have an appropriate Yountville aesthetic to reflect it. So hopefully, the pain, anguish, and delay will be worthwhile once we get going. And then Sandra and Graham can be prepared for all the people that didn't participate the first go-around that now want to participate in the program. But again, that's us being proactive, working with the business community, and stepping out and trying to do something different. And then again, we've had a number of applications, including Stuart Sellers, Tasting Room, Replacement Dwellings in Old Town Historic, two major revisions to the Vineyard Oaks project, and as you know, we'll be looking at a rezone of the last remaining retained juices in Old Town will be coming forward shortly. So some positive things that I think will reflect the character. And I should also add that we were also successful in a renovation with lavender in that's also retaining the historic use, but allowing that business to expand to meet pressures. Two point three, historic resources. Here again, is, we're sitting in Town Hall, which the council made the decision to renovate consistent with historic resource standards. As your manager, I can tell you, I wasn't thrilled with the over two-hundred-thousand-dollar cost we got for renovating the windows as opposed to replacing them, but I do have to admit, they look pretty good now that they're all back. I say that in some jests, but the council and the community made a decision that retaining the historic flavor of this building was very important, and we paid a price to do that, to retain the community flavor, to retain, and I think from the outside, we've been very successful, and on the inside, we have a very safe and hopefully a very functional building that will serve government operations for the next twenty-five to thirty years. We also, as I mentioned, have lavender in, which received approval for an adaptive reuse of the historic barn. And one area where we're a little behind on, but we anticipate moving more forward this year, is the historic resource ad hoc committee work effort on trying to put together some elements. But again, this is, I say, we're, a lot of progress in some areas, and this is one area where we're going to pick up the effort. Code enforcement. This was one of the areas we spent a lot more time on than we anticipated. Council has approved numerous updates to the nuisance ordinance. And chickens. And chickens, part two. So anyway, I think staff realizes that, I think the ordinances are getting in place. The other thing that there's a subtle theme to this is, we've been doing more code enforcement. Code enforcement's not, in our community, a planned activity. In other words, it hasn't reached the volume of activity that it justifies a staff person. So as a result, we put resources, usually at Sandra or Graham's level, this will be part of what the management analysts will do, and then, so it's just something, but we're seeing more activity, more need to monitor, and more need to take a range of actions. Hopefully, we can keep that in check. I will state that we have probably ninety percent compliance with our effort at a friendly letting people know they're not in violation, and then letting them know how. We keep working on how to make that letter softer and kinder, but yet, we need to follow up with certain folks on a follow-up. So that's a balancing act, but that is the Town Council's adopted philosophy, which is we seek compliance and education first before we take more aggressive action. Environmental sustainability. The Town Council approved greenhouse gas ad hoc committee provided feedback, and we've adopted the community-wide and the local government inventories. And I will point out, just last council meeting, you adopted a program that will allow local residents to potentially fund on their property tax bill, energy sustainable projects and improvements to their single-family and multifamily homes. So the nice thing there is we're helping people. The net benefit is also helpful towards our goals, and under environmental sustainability that's not included, we are, as you know, you've approved our moving forward on an enhanced full-toll votage program, and we're in that joint partnership, which we'll be coming back with you in March on what that final plan looks like, but it is likely that we will be able to be adding solar at the corp yard for the wastewater treatment plant, and the pump station, and then some additional solar at the community center to try to further reduce our PG and E bill at those three locations. And I will also point out that we've had great success with the methane gas project that, I think, was a little over a year, but I want to say, Graham, what, sixty-five percent reduction in our PGE bill?
Really?
So, that's the gift that keeps on giving, as they say. Three, communication and civic engagement. This was a big push on the part of the council early on, and for the most part, we are now moving more into a more active maintenance mode, but it does take a fair amount of staff time to stay current at the level. And I will point out, all of you, and we do say, all of you, and we thank you, are pretty good at letting us know when there's something on the website that needs a little adjusting, or something falls behind, because I do say, it takes time to stay current and relevant. But this year, we've created a number of new pages for the website, the Yountville Station Library, the Fair Political Practice Commission, Yountville Arts Commission, and the countywide Boards and Commission Yountville. And somehow, I missed it here, but we've also added the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District Yountville page that explains that, so it's not in the written report, but that's one, oh, I'm sorry.
It's abbreviated.
Involve citizens and through boards and commissions. Yountville Arts was moved to a full-town commission. And I think we've, Michelle gets a lot of compliments as well here on, we tried to update our marketing and our outreach effort with our brochures to be more relevant and try to make it something that's interesting, and the staff of the various bodies also have contributed as well as you. So when we start, you know, because, you know, we just need to look at it. If we just continue to do things the way we always have and wonder why nobody applies, that's not going to change anything. So we're trying to make it more relevant, getting that information out and distributing it. Community spirit. Parks and Recreation Five-Year Strategic Plan. This is a forward-thinking process that will begin this year. Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Cost Recovery and Pricing Policy. This is one you've seen earlier, but you'll continue to see, because we have to keep an eye on that. Online registration system was implemented this year, so we've had, again, a lot of positives here, and most of Samantha and her team's efforts going to go into maintenance and then the development of our five-year strategic plan. Fiscal help, one that I've spent a lot of time on. Budget to support the town's mission. I want to point out, we've had a balanced budget for the six-plus consecutive year, so that's a real positive. We've earned, the town of Yountville has earned the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for its catheter. And we've implemented the third year of our five-year utility rate increase program, and as you heard, we're seeing real positive progress in the operating deficits, removing the operating deficits in both our water and wastewater, and allow us to have the funds necessary to pay off the existing debt, and to put funds into a replacement fund reserve so that we have cash to pay for projects going forward. That's the whole focus, and right now, we appear to be on track with that five-year projection. Five point two, long-range financial forecast. Finance Director Bradbury has attended a workshop, and this is one of the areas that we're behind on, but we anticipate making that a tenet this year. The five-year capital improvement program. The key element again this year was the sale of the bond money so that we could finance the construction for the Town Hall structural strengthening, and also move forward with the sewer replacement, and then the street replacement for the deteriorated sections of Yount Street and Madison, which were high at the list of the council's interest, and probably highest at the list of our residents' complaints about when are we going to do something. So the good news is that we are shortly out to bid, and we anticipate that that project will be under construction this spring, summer. So hopefully, the annoyance for a couple weeks during the project construction will be well worth it when those projects are complete. Services and infrastructure. Maintain compliance with evolving water regulations. The good news here is we have secured and completed our permit requirements for our domestic water supply permit from the California Department of Public Health. Six point two-five, complete the recycled water master plan and feasibility study. We've done that, we've moved forward, and in fact, last week, the issued the bid notice, so we're out to bid for that project, and we hope to award the bid shortly and then be under construction. be under construction. Maintain Compliance with Current and Evolving Stormwater Regulations. I know Councilmember Hall still remembers that conversation very well, as the council does, on the fact that we've had significant changes in those areas, and we'll be spending both more staff time and more resources in those areas. Key Streets and Sidewalk CIP Projects. We implemented a 250,000 slurry seal and micro-surfacing project, which covered approximately 25% of the town's streets. And we did a number of sidewalk improvement projects along Washington Street between Mulberry and the driveway to V Marketplace, bulbouts and ADA curb cuts at Yount Street and Humboldt, ADA curb cuts at Vista and Fennel Road, and new pathways into Yountville Community Park for Madison on the No-Yo area of town, as well as condition certain private development to put sidewalks in where they haven't, case being Napa Valley Lodge. And also, the recently approved Stuart Sellers will be adding sidewalks and lighting. All right. As a, moving on, there are a number of key initiatives we'll be focusing on the next two years remaining, and those include our GIS, which I'll talk about briefly later today, and then a maintenance management system that will be the focus for next two years, under leadership. Community Character. We are going to focus on the historic resource and ramping up those areas. Code Enforcement. And we'll be continuing with a stronger effort on sustainable, our environmental sustainability. As I mentioned, there's both our action plan and the photovoltaic project. Communication and Civic Engagement. We will be putting efforts into update that, and we have just acquired a new engagement software that will allow us to do some polling and profiling, and staff, we're about just to get that, so we're going to look at using that to be more active in some of our engagement with our residents. Community Spirit. We've already talked about the big focus will be the planning effort for the Parks and Rec Five-Year Strategic Plan, our long-range financial forecast. And I'm just going to suggest that the next page is all covered in the presentation that Graham will be presenting shortly in a couple of weeks on the CIP. But we have a very aggressive CIP that we'll be addressing, and a wide range of projects, including the construction, but also a lot of planning documents. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have, and we appreciate the opportunity to update you on what we're doing with your approved 2011-16 strategic plan.
Questions or comments?
Well, I have a comment.
Go for it.
I just want to congratulate you, and when you look at this list of accomplishments that you have all made, and we've all made together, that you've done most of the work, thank you very much. You know, it's very impressive, so I'm proud to be a part of it.
Thank you. And I will say, the credit goes to the organization and the management team and all the employees in the organization, because we do talk about the strategic plan, and we talk about how does it impact what we're doing, and where does it roll down, so to speak.
Yeah, I'd, first of all, like to say, congratulations to all of us, and, you know, good work. The other thing I would like to at least acknowledge, because so many times in the commercial world, people put together these strategic plans, and they're really great on paper, and then everyone disappears, and none of the stuff ever gets reviewed. They're not dynamic, they don't evolve, they don't get vetted, or acknowledged, or measured. So you don't manage what it is you say you were going to do, and five years rolls around, and nothing actually that you ever thought you were going to do, or that you said you were going to do, got accomplished. And what we've done here in the town, and it's a credit to all of the staff, is we've actually put this strategic linkage, or this linkage of these strategic items back in every single sort of work effort that goes on, and we see that in the reports that you provide us, and how it's inherent or linked to what is actually occurring. And so having measurable outcomes, and then actually seeing, and I'll call it the fruits of those labors, you know, and the list that you provided is very comprehensive, but it's not everything. And I think that those of us that, you know, take the time to walk around town and think about the real activity that's going on, and how much we've accomplished, even in the short period of time that I've been on the town council, but certainly within the time period that this strategic plan has been in place, is really significant. And again, just, you know, congratulations to all of us, because you guys are the ones doing all the heavy lifting. But I look back at it, and I say it's really helpful to be able to see a strategic plan that's actually linked to activity and measurable. Because so often, in the workplace, or outside of the public eye, we just, you know, we build these things, and we just don't ever see them actually happen. Five years later, you're wondering, what did you think when you put it down in paper? And here, we can see that we're being successful with that, so good job.
I just wanted to echo those comments. Thank you for all the accomplishments of 2013. And I would say, you look back at them, I know there were a couple of big things that were great to accomplish. I think 2013 really overall was a great year. And as former Councilman Steve Rosa and a former employee said when we were doing this building, he always said to me, finally, we're retrofitting Town Hall and bringing that up to modern standards. And I think it really is great to have accomplished this. I do find it remarkable that we essentially paved or maintained 25%, or over 25% of all the roads in Yountville. That certainly has to be the best in Napa County. And we're about to embark on a major road project in the calendar year 2014 on Yount Street and Madison to really take care of truly the worst two roads that we have in town. So that will really be great to accomplish in 2014. So thank you for all the hard work. And I agree on your comments. I think the thing that makes this strategic plan useful is it's not just a bunch of fluffy, we want to do whatever, but it's tactical. And it's sort of tied to real achievable things as opposed to, you know, ideas that really won't ever come to pass. So I think that's one of the great benefits of this plan. I would ask for any public comment. We have no public, so we'll move on. Item 13A, a brief report on the GIS.
I can read between the lines on that one. Yes. I'd like to share with you, you all have a copy of the GIS assessment, and I am not going to go into great detail, other than to point out, we have been taking an entrepreneurial approach and working with the city of Rancho Cucamonga, which has a long-established GIS. And it's been a learning lesson for all of us. This document will give you an overview of the comprehensiveness of the study, and now staff is starting to implement. During the mid-year budget review, we're probably going to ask for allocation of a few more dollars, because one of the things that we think we can do is leapfrog the implementation by them coming up and helping to completely do a lot of the data gathering that we'll use, and then we go forward to build the interfaces and then acquire. So anyway, this will give you a good snapshot. If nothing else, it's light reading before bed. But this will help provide some understanding, one, of a number of the, what's all involved in GIS, and how we intend to use some of that over a multiple number of years. And then in a couple of weeks, we'll be talking to you at mid-year budget adjustment. But this was one of the items funded in this year's CIP, and one of our more significant, and it's probably one of the cornerstone processes for how we can stay a lean organization by providing the resources for our department and our employees to do their job better. And you may have remembered, about a month ago, there was a big article in the Napa Register about the city of Napa partaking on a similar effort. And in some ways, for us to not be that far behind the city of Napa on that's pretty impressive, and our scalability will really let us jumpstart. So that's why I say, I will point out, we do not have the ability to stop what we're doing with our employee base and stay current, and that's where we need to bring some external resources in to help us balance. So that's why we're going to take a look at the budget and move some things around, and try to get a little bit more done in the next two year, current year and next year, and then taper down in year three. So that's a highlight.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes. Thank you, town manager. This says this was updated January 8, 2013.
It's probably a typo.
It is.
Okay, then I point you to...
I know that's a typo.
Okay, then page one under introduction. If it really is a typo, then...
Yep, we'll get that taken care of. It's going to carry through on the template.
It's not even there, but it's under the introduction section, under Town Staff.
Now, we received a preliminary on, in December, and we asked them to help us if we did the effort. So I'm assuming that that's just one that...
Okay.
For those of you that start the new year and forget to do the 2013, we just have it in a more visible format.
I was going to say, if this just came in today, or, you know, this week, and it's a year old already, we should...
No, staff will attest that this is only about a week or so old in this format.
And just so I can understand sort of next steps, because this is an informational report only at this juncture, is this something that you would like us to go through, as you said, as light reading before bed?
It's really more of an information to get you an idea. We will be bringing back shortly a contract with the city of Rancho Cucamonga to move forward with this, as well as show the budget, a number of the software and equipment we will buy directly, and then contract with them for design of the interface, and the applications, and the data collection. And then, we're also researching the municipal management software system that we're going to select, but that'll be funded next year out of your July budget at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Councilman?
Well, forgive my ignorance if this is, you know, not part of this equation, but is this, is there a possibility that town-wide Wi-Fi will result from this?
No, this has nothing to do with Wi-Fi.
Never mind.
To follow up, since you bring it up, one of the things in our capital improvement program is looking at remote reading of water meters. And when we did the, we're looking at the security system, we're going to skate it with the recycled water system, we're looking at the slow speed of our access to file sharing, email, internet. At the corporation yard, we put in what's called an air fiber. So it connects the corporation yard to our community center. Looking comprehensively at communications, some agencies have set up Wi-Fi within their city, so they can remotely read their water meters, and then people go on the internet, and they can see what their usage is at 2:00 in the morning to see if they have a leak or something. So we are evaluating that in the capital improvement program. It's, could work well with GIS, because you could have a mobile tablet, or iPad, or something while you're out in the field doing, with GIS, you'll be able to do is bring up your tablet, look at the system, whether it's sewer, water, store, and drain, do work orders, enter information, and then also access data about water meters. So if we're talking to somebody about water conservation, we could say, okay, well, here's your usage, and it looks like you have a leak, because there's water running at 2:00 in the morning, everything's off. So it'll be much more easily accessible to data if we have a network in the town. Whether it becomes a hotspot is, you know, we're a small town, so it's possible, but we're looking at different types of technology to do that. But we haven't started any communications with any Wi-Fi company or anything like that, but it is...
So it's not that far afield a question, actually, because it all makes sense.
No, but I don't want to create any impression that the current level of funding will deliver a town-wide free Wi-Fi or anything like that.
But it's one of those possible options we're looking into.
And it's something that may be scalable once we get the system in to do something like that.
Sponsored by Stalba.
Yeah.
Okay. Are those all the staff reports for tonight?
Just one last informational item on the Town Hall parking lot, and it's not shown here. Staff has been working, and as you had asked, we received bids and looked at a change order. The Public Works Director and I reviewed the potential on that, and were uncomfortable with the bid. It seemed a little high, and it has the caveat with all the PG and E stuff that's in the front. But because we still think we can do better, we're coming up now with an internal plan that might bring some parking into the front lawn on the front diagonal, and actually get us a little bit more parking than on the front. So we're doing, taking a look at that, so, but it does look like the head-in parking, at least in the current effort. But what we're talking about is a couple diagonal spots, and then along the front, we think we might be able to square out where the flagpole kind of is, and that can give us three parking spots parallel there. So we may be able to end up with a actual improvement over the head-in parking by better use of the front alignment in Town Hall. So that effort is currently underway to kind of get a preliminary look at that and evaluate in the next two weeks whether that could be a better change order potential. It certainly has much less risk in terms of the known condition of the environment, and moving a little bit of the dirt and replacing the railroad ties with, which we need to do anyway with curbing. So that's what we're currently looking on right now.
And if I could ask a question in this portion. Can you briefly make any comments that you might be able to make on water? We're seeing other cities taking tangible actions. We heard the Veterans Home Report.
The first thing is, as I indicated in comments to the Yountville son with Sharon Stensis, we need to take the current situation and look at it as a wake-up call. I think there's things that, as a community, we can do better in, and we probably are looking at bringing back on your next council meeting, a stage-one declaration which would urge voluntary compliance and education outreach. You heard in the report today that Rector Reservoir is at 70%. So I don't want folks to be alarmed. The concern that I think staff would have is not so much for this year, but if we don't start saving a little, what would happen if we don't have the miraculous spring? You know, the good news at 70% is, it won't take a ton for the reservoir to return, and that's what we've highlighted. Rector is a very, very reliable local water source, and it principally only funds the Veterans Home and the town with a small amount going into the creek, and a small amount going to fish and game. So we don't want to be too alarming, but at the same point in time, I do think our community does need to take stock, and we will begin an education effort and encourage that 20%, just in case this is one of those droughts that turns into a three-year drought. And we won't know that, and certainly, trying to practice some, you know, low-impact but positive result water conservation techniques, much like what the governor has encouraged, is appropriate, and we should do our part. And more importantly, what I will remind everybody is, if they take stock of their water consumption, it's going to have a positive impact on their pocketbook as well. Because I think as a community, we tend to overwater. So people, if they check their outdoor sprinklers, their systems, convert to drip irrigation, look at their plant material choice. We are in a Mediterranean climate, and sometimes we enjoy growing things that don't naturally grow in a Mediterranean climate, but if you give them a ton of water, will. Those are choices people are going to make. Simple things like not running your tap while you're brushing your teeth. I mean, there's a whole number, a lot of it's fairly straightforward, so we're going to be putting together some communications outreach. And frankly, we've been talking internally. We're also going to be doing, it's a good opportunity for our staff to go look at all of our facilities, parks, make sure that we're doing the same thing internally that we'd be asking our residents to do.
We're also bringing the Water Conservation Plan, or Water Efficiency Plan, back to the council for approval. It's not required for the town, because we're under 30, we serve fewer than 3,000 people, but we've been working with the Rural Community Assistance Corporation on a water efficiency plan, and then, possibly a good opportunity to bring that to you for approval, and then we could do some education. We also, with the other cities in Napa County, received a Prop 84 grant, so we can participate in cash for grass and conversion, and also smart irrigation controllers and things like that. So we'll, we have an MOU with City of Napa, and then we can start to have them help us with inspect, pre-inspection, post-inspection, and people participating. Because there has been interest in that at Yountville days, people have asked about, well, if I take out all my grass, can I get, you know, a grant or something like that?
So this is not the cash for grass in Colorado?
No.
Okay.
No moratorium there. I guess the only question or comment I have about that, and I think we all in this room and throughout the community, you know, recognize that there's this drought going on, and the agricultural, potential agricultural impact. And I think many of us in the town is a good example of how we've already taken measures proactively before we even had this drought, this current drought. But it's certainly something that we all need to be cognizant of, and the town showing leadership in that regard, I think, is something we, I think everyone at this dais would say, we need to take that, those steps, be proactive, and be... be sort of model citizens, if you will, and acknowledging that there is a challenge that we could face, even in light of the information we were given earlier tonight. So I, I would encourage us to do that, whatever, whatever way we could.
So, but when they told us that we had 70 percent capacity, do we have any idea how much acre feet the actual Veterans Home use? We use about 550, but how much do they use?
They use about 500, so it's a little over 1,000 per year.
So we've, you know, if it doesn't rain for three years, we'll suck it dry, basically.
Right, the, the issue though, also to keep in mind, is we have a municipal well for emergencies and droughts, but they don't, that's their only source of water.
Right.
And, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, on a personal note, having lived in San Francisco in 1974, when we had the last multi-year drought, I have already begun, I've moved a bucket into the shower, so that when I have to wait for the water to warm up, I, that water goes into the bucket, and then I'm watering my plants with that water, and I just, you can also flush the toilet with it. I'm a shower kind of person, so I was going to say, save this for the end of the evening, but if you use, if you're taking a bath in the tub kind of person, you can also water your plants with that water. I just wanted to say.
Well, and I think one concern is, we've seen this with our Water Enterprise in the past, is the less rain, the more people use water. It's, it's the double whammy, so that's why it is important for people to be cognizant, and typically this time of year, you don't irrigate your, your gardens or your water, and now they're completely dry. So please just keep that in mind, that we can exacerbate our own problem. Okay, moving on to item 14, council member meeting reports and comments, we'll start with meetings. I will note that the Napa County Flood Control meeting was canceled, there's no water to control. Just kidding. Item B, Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency, this past Wednesday, we had a special board meeting for three hours to discuss the 25-year plan for NCTPA, and one thing that I, I brought up and hope that we can actually, there was a lot of agreement on this, is it's very typical for, well, typical human nature, but I find it particularly typical in transportation to say that we want people to do X, not thinking about what people actually need. So you want to take cars off the road, well, that sounds good, but how are you actually going to fit that into the realities of people's lives? And I, I would, we, we talked about a couple of things about the fact that the city of Napa, as a larger urban city versus the up-valley cities, which are very small and spread out, that to, to address some of the traffic issues up-valley, we cannot treat the two as the same. And when it really comes down to it, while it's a good service, the number 10 that runs up to Calistoga, all the way down into Napa through Yountville and St. Helena, doesn't really have any substantial impact on, on what the true traffic patterns of, of the upper part of the valley. And we also discussed the south part of the county, particularly the American Canyon area, with their current traffic issues, the planned developments that they have coming, particularly with their town center site, and additional traffic that will already occur on a place that has too much traffic, and what to do about that. And I certainly believe that what happens down there has a very large impact on Yountville and our economy, because if you sit in traffic in American Canyon for an hour, it kind of ruins a little bit of your Yountville experience when you come up here. So that, that plan will be put forward here in the next year, and hopefully we can make it a useful strategic plan as opposed to one that sits on the shelf and doesn't go anywhere. Well, was there a WIC meeting?
No.
There was no WIC meeting, because there is no water in the watershed. Item, I know, that's not true. Napa County League of Governments, we met last Tuesday, was it two Tuesdays ago?
It was Thursday.
It was last Thursday, there we go, last Thursday here in Yountville, at the Yountville Community Center, in Old Community Hall. We had, overall, good attendance from all the different jurisdictions, food provided by Kenyon Gordon of Kenyon Catering, which was, was great, and we had, in my opinion, among the best presentations we've ever had at NICLOG, we had several of the people who were involved in arts in Yountville, Michael Madden from the Napa Valley Performing Arts Center, Kristy Shepherd from Napa Valley Museum, and then also a discussion about Yountville arts and the success of, of art here in Yountville. And I think it's, it's very clear that, that Yountville is now, I mean, this is, we've made incredible strides over the, the past few years, is clearly a leader in art in Napa County and is recognized for that. Who can report on the League of California Cities? I did not attend.
I did. The League of California Cities met last Wednesday evening, and we met in Marin, in Mill Valley, in their community center, which is very large and impressive, and there were many more Marin communities represented than we usually see when we meet either here or in the Vacaville area. And it was, it, it was a, a smaller meeting in some ways, but it was, it was a very good meeting, and Mayor, yeah, Mayor was with us, and he gave our report to the, to the group.
Other comments, events? I see some on your iPad there, Councilmember Hall.
I have, I have two quick announcements, one of which is this Saturday, the 25th, is the Quanis Crab Feed at 5:00 PM. I will look to Sam to see how many tickets are left, and maybe if there's a quick update.
There's not a lot of tickets left.
So get them now?
We will be accepting them through PayPal through the end of the day tomorrow, and then after that, they can only be purchased at Hill Family if there are some left, so we're nearing sellout.
Or you could buy them scalped at the front.
If there are scalpers, yes.
Scalped tickets?
Yes.
Very good.
It'll be a full house, thanks.
Yep, thank you. And then the second one I want, the second notice I want to make sure, I think I said this in the last meeting, is that on March 1st is the Red and White here in Yountville, and you can purchase tickets at redandwhite.org?
Redandwhiteaffair.com.
Redandwhiteaffair.com, so I got that nearly, no, not even near right, but, and that's March 1st, so those proceeds go to the Yountville Elementary School, and a lot of people here have been in the past, and we hope that people will come again this year.
Do you want to report on the pasta feed?
I could, I was going to leave that for you, so you had something to talk about.
Thank you.
But, yes, I'll let you do that unless other people want to get in front of you.
All right, well, let's report on the pasta feed.
All right.
This past Friday was the annual, we have declared it the 24th annual pasta feed, since the dates are a little unclear, but we know we're close to that. And we didn't plan ahead enough to make it the 25th, so we'll, maybe we'll do that next year. The, it's a great community event for everybody who's been, and it was a, it was a terrific success, especially considering how far ahead our group planned it. We raised over $6,000 for Yountville Elementary School. The baked goods, which seem to get better and, and more plentiful every year, raised over $1,600 for the, specifically for teacher supplies, and the, the balance of it will go to the Yountville School Foundation to promote the school, and also for technology with the new tech network efforts at Yountville Elementary School. And I, apparently, Councilmember Hall has another...
Well, I, I think we should obviously thank the Housley family for all their donations and all the volunteers that were supportive in the, the pasta feed, because it's a pretty big undertaking, and I mean, we probably saw 300 people in total with all the volunteers and everyone else, so it's a, it's a really big undertaking, so thank you to everyone who came and participated.
It's a unique event in the fact that it is essentially a cost-free event, everything is, the Housleys donate all the food and, and, and do all that, so, so essentially, all the money that, that is paid in goes directly to the school, which is, which is very unique.
And I think another positive aspect, it, it's a low-cost family event, and this year, the Town Parks and Rec, we added a component with a winter indoor movie night, and I popped my head in, and Peter Pan was the presentation, and it looked like it was a fairly large crowd, so it looks like it was well-received, and that helped explain where all the kids went about 7:45.
Right. Disappeared.
Maybe we'll start earlier next time. I have kids. Okay, item 15, if there's nothing else, we have three future agenda items that we know of that are listed here, and item 16, which I assume we are going to have an update? Yes. Okay, is closed session as listed, conference with legal counsel with existing litigation in the town of Yountville versus Swank Construction et al. I am assuming no reportable action?
We're not requesting any, yes.
Okay, so we, we do not expect reportable action, this is the last time on our, our agenda, and we will only come back for, into public session for the brief adjournment. So with that, we will move into closed session.
And then we'll adjourn to February 4th?
Yes.
Okay.
At that time, we will adjourn to our regular Town Council meeting of February 4th, 6:00 PM here at Town Hall.